Good evening. Now, thank you for joining us this evening. This Monday, we have a very, very exciting show. We're going to feature the two candidates that are running for Travis County Commissioner, Precinct Three, for the Republican Party. And I'll just relinquish my microphone here. I just want to mention a couple of things, special events that are coming up this week. This Friday at 9:00 a.m., School Choice Organization, well, it's School Choice Week, starting this week. It's School Choice Week. And this Friday at 10:00 a.m. at the State Capitol, we will have over 3,000 students and parents from all over the state of Texas to come amplify school choice and empowering parents in the education of their children. So if you're available this Friday at 9:00 a.m. at the Texas House steps, join us for this rally. We also have confirmed our Texas Line Commissioner, George P. Bush, he'll be a speaker. And we also have invited Governor Abbott and Lieutenant Speaker Patrick. For this particular election, February the first, which is just around the corner, is the last day to register. If you're not registered, in order to vote in the March first primaries. So if you're not registered, LULAT will hold a last-minute voter registration on the last, on the February the first, on February the first, at 2021 East Sixth Street, from 5:00 to 12:00 midnight. So we have plenty of opportunities for you to register to vote and to get out there and vote. And the only, this is the opportunity that one time every four years, that we as eligible voters go to that poll and evaluate, if you will, our elected officials or anyone that is wanting to come and be part of the election cycle. And with that, I'll turn my mic over to my friend here, my colleague, Mike.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome this evening to the debate between the incumbent Commissioner Gerald Daugherty and his challenger, Jason Nasur. The time to vote is a time for we, the people, to express ourselves and give our opinion and say what it is we want and what we need. And we need to find out who our representatives might be and get an understanding of them and their views so that we can make reasoned decisions based on information, based on information which hopefully, which hopefully is trustworthy. So this evening, Mr. Nasur and Mr. Daugherty, we'll be debating issues concerning the Precinct Three Commissioner race. Mr. Daugherty is the incumbent and he'll be able to, he'll be allowed to speak first for three minutes. They're going to have three-minute opening statements for each, each part, each person. And in that statement, I would ask they cover things such as their educational professional accomplishments, their awards they received, and their organizations that they represent. And we will hopefully ask questions that will help enlighten you as to their views and help viewers to be able to make informed decisions in this race.
Great. Commissioner Daugherty, welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Govino and Mike. And Poki, thank you for always doing this. This is a, this is an important part of any process. And trying to get information out to folks is probably the key component of making sure that, that people make an informed decision whenever it comes time to vote. And, and thank you for mentioning that you do need to register by the first in order to be able to vote in this primary. A few things about me. I have been in Austin, Texas since about 1969, which puts me here for somewhere around 46, 47 years. I grew up in Houston, Texas, went to Cypress Fairbanks High School. After graduating from high school, I determined that college was absolutely something that, that I was going to be determined to fulfill. But before I went to school, I had signed a professional baseball contract in 1969 with the Boston Red Sox. While I was playing ball, I was also going to school, mostly here at UT. And once I finished college in 1975, after realizing in 1973 that I wasn't going to go too far in professional baseball, so I figured I better get an education if I was going to be able to live in this world. I was fortunate enough to be able to stay in Austin after graduating from, from UT in, in 1975. And that was really where I started my professional career, having gotten a degree in phys ed with a government concentration from the University of Texas. I felt like that I might want to teach, I might want to coach. Fortunately for me, unfortunately, I should say, I found out that, you know, teaching was not going to be an education or was not going to be a career that was probably going to afford me the lifestyle that I wanted, nor was I just going to be able to live in Austin, Texas. So I became a businessperson. I've been a businessperson most of my adult life here in Travis County. The last 10 of the 14 years, I have been an elected official. I have been the Precinct Three County Commissioner that encompasses, you know, western Travis County. From 2008 to 2012, I was not in office. I think that was one of those Obama tsunami periods where if you were a Republican in 2008, you were going home. I determined that I quite, that I hadn't quite finished everything that I felt like I needed and wanted to do. And so I came back and ran for office again in 2013. So I've been the Commissioner from 2013, and this period will end at the end of this year.
Again, thank everybody for, this is a wonderful opportunity to sit and visit. And, you know, about me, born and raised in Austin, I'm a fifth generation, fifth generation Austinite. My family moved here in 1893. I, born and raised and lived in just about every part of Austin. Ended up living out in the Lake Travis area before I moved to El Paso to go to high school where my dad was going to school. Came back, went to UT, walked on to the University of Texas football program. I had turned down some offers. I couldn't imagine myself playing football anywhere else but Texas. Played there, graduated, got a degree in philosophy and symbolic logic, and went to Baylor Law School. Graduated from Baylor in 1997, came back and went to work for a gentleman named Peter Kreisner, and learned that a diverse practice was probably the best way to go as far as helping out the community and really being able to give time and attention to just, just about every facet you could possibly imagine in the community. In 2004, I created a partnership with Terry Keel. And Terry and I have been partners ever since, and to this day are still partners. And my practice is pretty much focused on general civil litigation, business litigation, real estate litigation, and then the transactional components associated with each one of those. As a part of what I do in the litigation world and in the legal world, I'm an adjunct professor at Baylor. I teach advanced criminal practice and procedure, and I teach advanced civil practice and procedure. And then I spend a lot of time teaching over at the Sheriff's Academy, the civil process for up-and-coming and future law enforcement officers. My breadth of experience, both in the governmental sector and, and business as a whole, has been both from an operating component and from a litigation component. I spent probably 16 of my years representing any number from 20 to 30 different corporations and, and helping them, getting them fixed, fixing the bleeding, finding out what was wrong with them, and getting them back on track. And in 2012, I decided it was time to do it for myself. So I did that. My wife, myself, discussed it and decided it was going to be okay. And we created Coke FM, and recently expanded to acquire The Horn FM, which is a sports channel. And then we have Classic FM, which is an alternative music venue. We started that company off with literally baling wire and duct tape, and now we are growing rapidly and looking to expand. And part of my decision to run in this race is to put in those things I've learned over the past 20 years, both inside and outside of government, and to give my knowledge in business back to the community.
Thank you. Would you like to ask the first question? Sure. I guess the first question that many people, obviously out there in the community and today, as we all know, Austin and in Travis County has become very, very expensive to live in. And the taxes are just eating us up. And I know that the Commissioners' Court this year made an effort in trying to reduce that. But how do you see us moving forward with this continuous increase in expense in living in Travis County, Commissioner Daugherty?
Well, you, you hit the nail on the head, Govino, because living in Austin, Texas, is very difficult today from an affordability standpoint. And, and I'd like to tell you that I think it's going to get better. Unfortunately, I'm not sure that it's going to get better. The one thing that your governmental bodies can do is they can work like the dickens to keep the spending as, as low as it can be so that you can set a smaller tax rate. Because your tax rate is really, truly, the only way that Travis County can create a situation so that people can afford to live here. The unfortunate thing is, is that the valuations that you have with real estate today is beyond imagination. And that is not something that the Commissioners' Court can do really very much about at all. And with that being the case, and I think, I mean, just look at from last year, valuations we hear are going to be up another 10%. So the Commissioners' Court is going to have to do everything within their power to spend judiciously so that we can set the tax rate as low as we can so that, you know, it's more affordable to live in this community.
Okay. Real quickly, any ideas of where you're looking at reducing that budget?
Well, I mean,
Any ideas or any?
You're, you're, you're having to say no to a lot of places where you have spent money in the past. The unfortunate thing is, is that county government is very precise. The legislature tells you what you have to do. Govino, I know that you know that because you were once part of county government. Whenever you're taking care of the statutorily mandated things like the criminal justice system, I mean, it is an incredibly expensive process to run and to operate. Now, I haven't been very successful. No one has, no one has been, no one has been very successful whenever it comes to approaching all the benches and asking, where might we find some efficiencies to just, you know, cut the cost in the court system? But that's one where the judges know that I'm going to be coming to them and asking for some of their help.
Mr. Nasur?
You know, affordability is obviously a huge component of what we deal with here in Travis County. And I think there are things that can be done at the Commissioners' level. You know, we have a situation where you're dealing with a 950-something million-dollar budget, okay? And at some point, you got to go back and, and as the Commissioner said, you got to really take a look at what these expenditures are. I have had, and I am very vocal about the fact that I am against certificates of obligation to borrow money. And I don't believe in them. I think that there are ways that we can manage our budget without dipping into them. Gerald mentioned the, the justice system and how expensive it is. There was this contemplation on building this, this courthouse, this 287 million-dollar project that went to the voters. Well, shy of doing that, it seems to me that it'd be incumbent on the Commissioners to visit with and discuss alternative options that don't cost us money today or tomorrow. For instance, we have a Thurman Blackwell Justice Center that sits almost vacant half the day. From noon on, it's almost quiet as can be. And there's this discussion about overcrowding in the civil courthouse. Move them over, let them take over operations over there. Let's not spend money that way. You know, they have a central docket system. We have one of the most expensive line items in our budget being the justice system, and yet we're the most ineffective and probably one of the worst in the state of Texas at ultimately dealing with the business at hand, which is our justice. And, and quite frankly, we don't need a central docket. We don't have to have lawyers called in at a cattle call at 8:30 in the morning and have them sitting there all day long jamming up the court, creating the very problem that the Commissioners' Court was having to address in the form of seeking some new county complex. But more importantly, and in a nutshell, you can do things to make our lives better, provide better service without increasing our taxes. Are we going to be able to reduce taxes? You know, I don't know how that's going to happen. You know, the effective tax rate should be around 40. We're still sitting above it. But you can do things like take assets that are owned. The Commissioners' Court shouldn't be in the real estate business. Get out of it. Sell that property in the city limits. Get out in the unincorporated area. Build a complex for cash. That puts all that property that's exempt in the city back into the private sector and back on the tax rolls. Now you're sitting there increasing overall tax dollars that you can go out and do other things with without borrowing money, forcing us to have to pay for it.
There's, there's one question I had for each of you. A couple of months ago, City Councilman Zimmerman proposed new county courthouse construction out on the east side of Austin. I wonder what you think of that? What do you think of that idea?
Well, I mean, I think that what Councilman Zimmerman was talking about is putting a, a complex out near the Exposition and Heritage Center. If you go to the downtown attorneys, if you go to your judges, and quite frankly, you know, I hate the fact that you have to acquiesce at, at times with the judges. I mean, I haven't been very successful at pushing judges around. I mean, quite frankly, they'll tell you they're independently elected officials. I think a lot of folks felt like that perhaps the courthouse didn't need to be downtown. There was not one judge. There were very few, not to say that there weren't some attorneys that came to me and said, we don't think that it has to be downtown. That die was cast back in 2010 when the county bought that land, and Jason is right. That land was bought with COs, certificates of obligation, that I voiced opposition to before I left in 2008. I said, I did not think that you needed to use non-voter-approved money to go and buy the land. I don't think that we needed to spend non-voter-approved money to buy 700 Lavaca, the 15-story building that we're in. But we did. But I will say this, COs are a necessary, and people that understand why you have the ability to use COs, if you use them judiciously. And I have always used COs very judiciously. And I think that we, we've got, and I think that we have got to be very mindful about every penny that we spend.
You know, to answer your question, it's a great idea to build that courthouse out in the, in the Precinct Four. Precinct Four is a place that needs additional growth. You can increase the tax base by people going out and moving around there. I would not acquiesce to, to the lawyers or the judges. Simply put, you know, it is a great opportunity to increase everything across the board. Now, you look at a situation like right now, where Gerald was talking about COs. We have on this budget for 2016, 30 million that you moved for to build the Ronnie Earl District Attorney's Office. And there are county policies that dictate when and how we can borrow that money. And, and in this case, I think it was advocated that, or at least stated that it was a, a need now that would be cheaper than in the long term. And I just don't see that. I don't see where, when we borrow money, be it the, what's now, what, around 100 million dollars for Lavaca, be it the 30 million for the Ronnie Earl Building, the money for the medical examiner's building, we have assets that we can liquidate, that we can reappropriate. Getting down and getting rid of things that don't make sense anymore or aren't economically feasible, to reallocate them for a new purpose, a better purpose. Ones like the contemplated courthouse seem to be to make more sense than going to certificates of obligation. And you're right, sometimes they are necessary when in need. They were originally contemplated in the event of mass disaster when you couldn't get to the voters to acquire what you need. There are four other exceptions that come along with the use of them. And then you have county policy that dictates that you must go to the voters for any long-term debt. In my opinion, any certificate of obligation, and in this case, we're getting it every single budgetary cycle, is not something that falls within that purview. And, and this goes to increasing our tax burden, now or tomorrow. We're going to answer for those dollars now or later.
Well, now, now, let me make sure that I'm understanding Jason, Jason correctly. Do you think that I made the motion to build the Ronnie Earl Building with COs?
No. I was looking at, I was looking at the documents, and I see that you moved for the certificates of obligation to fund it.
No, that is absolutely not right. As a matter of fact, I'm the most outspoken critic of building the Ronnie Earl Building at all.
I noticed that you fought against the 47 million dollars, and that you had a problem with the cost associated with it. But unless the documents are misspoken and they're filed documents, I mean, I've, I've put them up on my Facebook, they're there to see. It indicates you moved for it, and, and it was originally supposed to be something like 33 million, and it got reduced down to 30 on y'all's line item strikes when y'all were working on the budget.
Well, then I need to go and look at your site because,
I pulled it off Travis County's site.
No, Jason, that is patently not true.
Okay.
I mean, there is, I mean, I've never been supportive of the Ronnie Earl Building. As a matter of fact, I mean, I was not supportive of continuing to fund the PIU, the Public Integrity Unit.
Well, I mean, it's not outlandish to think about that. I mean, you were the largest supporter from the Commissioners' Court for the building of the Travis County Courthouse.
What do you mean I was the biggest supporter?
You were, you put more money into that than any other Commissioner or county judge.
I gave, I gave $500.
The next highest was 25.
Well, I gave $500 for the courthouse and said, if the people of this community want to pass the courthouse, well, then we will move on it. If the people do not want, and they did not, they defeated it, I mean, what I was the most supportive of is making sure that the voters got to vote on it. Because when I first came back in 2013, there was a movement afoot of building the new civil and family courthouse with a P3 where it was going to again be COs spent to build that building. And I pitched a fit and said, I will not be part of issuing COs. This kind of a operation needs to be asked by the voters. And the voters said no, and we said, fine.
You're not saying that you weren't in support of the courthouse?
No, I'm saying that I was, I am supportive of a courthouse.
You were supportive of the 287 million dollar bond to build the courthouse?
I am supportive of asking the voters. When we were told that this was the kind of a facility that we needed, I said, that I'm fine with that as long as the voters will give us the opportunity to do that.
Do you believe, do you believe it's needed?
Absolutely, I do.
But what's, what's wrong, what's wrong, what's wrong with instead of spending money, utilizing the Thurman Blackwell Building when it's vacant half the day? What's wrong with revamping the central docket system so that we don't have people crowded?
Do you, do you really think, Jason, that you can go to the judiciary and get those judges in agreement with something that you just said?
I think that when it comes time for you dealing with the budget, I think that they're going to listen sooner or later.
Well, what we're going to do is, is go ahead and have you visit Jason's website.
Sure.
And have the others visit the county, Travis County Court records, and, and then therefore, you, the voter can, based on the testimony and the records, can make a wise decision as to where that this particular topic is going. I do know, I do want to go into another issue that we share with the city and the county that's been a very, very hot, hot topic. And I want to get feedback from both of you as to how you will proceed in the, in the next four years regarding this one issue. And that is county jail and ICE being in, well, ICE. And, and more specifically, the partnership of the city and the county in the one jail facility. And as you may remember, the discussions from some city folks that they want to break that contract and have their own jail. If you're from Austin and you remember, Poki, remember?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we got stopped, we got stopped, we'd go to the city misdemeanor, and that was it. But if it got bigger, we'd have to go to the county. Now, with that,
Nasur, what do you think about the ongoing internal agreement with the county jail
and the city and ICE in there?
I think ICE is just fine in there as far as I'm concerned. I think that Sheriff Hamilton is one of the few sheriffs in the state that actually upholds his responsibility to ensure that no one that is unlawfully allowed to be on the streets is free, period. It doesn't make any sense to me that there would ever be any discussion from an elected official or anyone to say it's okay to disregard the law. And quite frankly, if they're brought in on a DWI, I don't care how wonderful the family man is or the family woman is or the person that's in custody. If they are unlawfully in our country, our sheriff has a responsibility to keep that person in custody, period. And if ICE is there and can expedite that process to get them back into the federal system and deport it if so be it, or if the judge decides to let them stay at the federal level, fine. But in my opinion, I should be there. I think it is a travesty that so many people are advocating to disregard the law.
I mean, there are five members on the Commissioners' Court right now. Everybody knows. There are four solid votes to go against the sheriff on the ICE program. I am the only person that has stood up with the sheriff and said that the sheriff ought to be entitled to do what he thinks is the right thing to do. And as a matter of fact, in my opinion, it's the reason why Sheriff Hamilton is not running again, is because there are so many people after him because of the ICE program. I totally, absolutely, 100% agree that the sheriff is, has taken the right stance and is exactly where he needs to be.
What about the contract with the city on the jail?
Well,
And then we'll go back.
Okay. I think, I think the city would be foolish to go and to try to build a central booking facility. This is the perfect marriage that you can have with the city and the county. We have a good marriage with the Austin-Travis County EMS system. We have a good system where central booking, and it is the responsibility of county government, you know, to run the jail system. I think that the city would be very unwise. I think it would cost them a lot of money. I think that we have always got to work with the city, and the city pays a decent share because, quite frankly, it's over 70% of the people that come into central booking come in through APD. We've always got a little bit of a struggle on how much we are, how much we can charge the city, just like we're always in a struggle with how much the city can charge us for EMS. We run the jail. They are a customer of ours. They run the EMS system. We are a customer of the city. And so, but, but, but they're good marriages, and they are the best example that you can have because in the state of Texas, you can't have metropolitan government, but you can't have interlocal agreements.
But the bottom line is that it comes out of here.
That's right. That's right.
Federal, state,
And that's the reason, and that's the reason that we need to run one system, because one system run properly is going to be more cost-effective than. And the reason, you know the reason that the city wants to do central booking? Because the city council does not agree with the sheriff on ICE.
What do you think, Mr. Nasur, on the contract between the city and the county on the jail?
I, I think that it needs to stay the way it is. You know, it, we've had it broken up before, like you said. It didn't work. It was ineffective. I don't think the city, at least at the time, definitely wasn't qualified to run a jail. And, and I'm not suggesting that's the case today, but it's an effective system where everything is centralized. And, and it makes for, it makes for a better operation from the time of arrest to the time of getting them out through the ultimate judicial process. It's just a smart move. It's hard to try to find out where a person is when they could be in any one of a number of places.
Well, what do you respond to the city that says that they're paying too much?
You know, that's just, that's just smoke and mirrors. It is an ICE issue. They want to disregard the law. They want to let unlawful people out. And, and quite frankly, you know, the, the city council has much bigger things that they should be dealing with. They really should. There's a lot of problems that really exist out there instead of trying to create a problem. And this is trying to create one.
Before I go to my next question, there's someone from the audience, I believe, who has a question.
They've got TJ here. He's probably got two or three. And Adam will be right up behind him. He's probably got two. Michael, what is there? If you can just take it on out of there.
Just, just let us know who you are, and we go from there. Just, just, just let us know who you are and that we go from there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on.
All right. Um, I have, I have a couple of questions. Number one, my name's TJ Scott. I think I'm pretty active in the Republican Party here in Travis County.
You are.
Um, Gerald, four years ago, I, I saw you a couple of times when you were running for this, for this office, okay? I mean, the TCRP meets once a month, there's four or five women's club, Republican Women's Clubs that meet once a month. The men's, or the Republican Club downtown meets once a month. Central Texas Republican Assembly meets once a month. Haven't seen you in four years. It's sort of like, okay, now we're, and I, I noticed you were at the TCRP meeting last week uh, because you're running again. And I'm wondering why we haven't seen you at any of these Republican things. Uh, I have, didn't see you at the, at the Republican Senate Convention two years ago. Didn't see you at the Republican State Convention. Uh, if you're a really, if you're a Republican, don't you, why aren't you active in Republican things other than getting every time it's four years? That's my question to you, Gerald.
Well, TJ, do you really question whether or not I'm a Republican or not? Is that, is that your real question?
My question is-
I mean, I've been elected three times. I've been elected three times-
Yes, you have.
As, as a Republican.
Yes.
I, whenever you are elected, let me tell you what, you have a job to do. I think that people elect folks to do, to go and to do the job and to be in the places. I mean, the Austin Republican Club, for example, is a Tuesday lunch.
Yes.
Do you know what day the Commissioners Court meets? Guess, it's Tuesday. I mean, no one has ever really, to me, has ever questioned whether or not I'm a Republican. I don't think, I mean, uh, this may be the first time when, because there's strong insinuation here, that you think, do you think I'm a Democrat?
No, I, I said, I-
You just think, you, you, you have a problem because you think that I don't go to enough, I mean, first of all, I mean, no, I don't go to, but I've never gone to them. And whatever I go to the things when, during the election years, it's because those are the times that you go to those.
I don't think it's your responsibility as to come back to the Republican Clubs and tell us what's going on in Travis County?
I have never turned down a speaking engagement when I have been asked to come to any group unless it were on a Tuesday where I couldn't speak. So I never turned down any of those.
Okay.
Okay.
Jason? Uh, again, I've been around for eight, ten years in doing Republican things. Up until the time you decided to run, never seen you at any Republican events. How do you answer that?
That's true. Uh, until I decided to run, I didn't think I was gonna be in politics. And once I joined the race, I learned a lot. A lot of the, a lot of the entities and the associations and the meetings you described, I knew nothing about. I didn't know about them. If you're not in the party, you don't necessarily understand what's going on in the party. And I'm learning quickly, and I think they're invaluable. I've learned a lot going everywhere and talking to people and learning what their, you know, what their needs are, what's wrong, what's good for them, what, what they need to, to, to grow and prosper. I didn't know about any of it until I got in the race. If I was, if I was a politician that made a career out of it, or if it was something that I was in the know about when it got started, I probably would be a part of them and, and, and make as many as I could. But, uh, to answer your question, I had not been to them, I did not know they existed.
Okay, well, I'd say that I'm not a politician, but I go to all of them because I care about the Republican Party. Uh, have, have you read the Republican Party platform?
I have. It's about sixty-four pages long.
What, what's in it you guys don't agree with?
You know, there's quite a bit in there that I think generally that, uh, I, I don't know that I would agree with. I don't, I don't, I don't agree that it has to be broken down as specifically as it is. Uh, and, and to get into specifics would be hard, it is sixty-four pages long. And, and it goes into everything from, uh, dealing with Africa to dealing with constitutional government. Uh, you know, but there, there, it's, it's kinda like, uh, it's kinda like our Constitution and our Bill of Rights, right? It's a malleable document, and the more specific you try to get, okay, the harder it is to accomplish. And sometimes I think that in documents such as the Republican Party Platform, uh, as in any number of other types of documents, be it a court order, uh, the more specific you get, the more problematic it can be. And I think it tries to get a little too specific. But I do overall agree with everything that it stands for.
Okay.
Abs- absolutely, TJ. I mean, you're, you're, you're talking to someone that has spent an unbelievable amount of hours being a public official as a Republican. Giving money, helping raise money. I mean, being, I mean, spending, I mean, you know, when, when you're the Commissioner, if you're gonna do, and especially the precinct three Commissioner, if you're gonna do it right, you're gonna spend fifty to sixty hours a week. You are going to go to evening meetings, you are going to go to the things that, first of all, that, oh, you know that you gotta get to them because you're the program. And, and I don't think I've ever missed a program. I don't think that I have ever missed anything where somebody has said, Gerald is our Speaker, where I've called and said, I can't make that meeting. Now TJ, I love the fact that the party has stalwarts like yourself. And, and there are a handful of people in this community that are that. And, and man, I mean, I'm appreciative of it. But, I mean, you know, to call in question whether I'm a Republican, um, you know, because I don't show up to things, I mean, that would be laughable. I mean, and especially if you go to the Travis County Commissioners Court and say, do you think that Gerald Darty is a Republican? I mean, they would laugh you right out of the room and say, he fights with us on everything, just about everything that we do. But I agree with Jason. I mean, you know, you can take some of the platform, hey, what are there? I mean, there were seventeen people running for the nomination for the presidency, all Republicans. I mean, that's the hardest thing that I'm gonna have to do, you know, come the time to do it because there are some things that I agree greatly with, with some, and some that I go, man, I don't, I don't know, I don't know that I'm there on that, but everybody's a Republican.
Okay. Thank you TJ for your, for your question. And like you mentioned, Commissioner Darty, there are many, many individuals, private individuals that get involved with politics like, like TJ, myself, with the Democratic Party. And like you mentioned, these are warriors out there, and we have real high respect for them. And we, we, uh, and wanna make sure that they continue to be involved in government because that's basically what it's about. Now, about the timeframe, yes, Mr. Nasur and Commissioner Darty already knows and I know, if elected, it's not gonna be forty, fifty hours a week, it's twenty-four seven. It's twenty-four seven because I clearly remember when the Holly Park Plant had a fire during Halloween. It was ten o'clock, and we got calls, and I, I called my assistant, uh, my, my assistant under the staff we had. He wouldn't answer, and I find, wait a minute, what happened? We went out there, the fire and everything, he comes up two hours late, what happened? Well, and I had my girlfriend, I was with my girlfriend, and at that time it was beepers, they were- Ah, okay, you know what? You better tell your girlfriend to find you a job, 'cause, no, no, you come for the people first. So it's a twenty-four seven job. And I commend all elected officials because, whether they're Democrat or Republican, because you're taking yourself from your family and all that, and I'm gonna stop there, go for it.
TJ stole one of my, one of my potential questions. But early in my legal career, one of the jobs I had was I served as legal counsel to the appointed elected officials of Jefferson County, which included the Commissioners. And based on my experience working in that job and working with the Commissioners, my question is, why do you want this job?
I want this job because it's needed and I'm good at it. I know what to do. I spent twenty years inside of the different aspects of what this budget creates. The justice system, the juvenile system. There's thirty-eight million dollars allocated just to juvenile probation alone. You know, I've, I have fought, uh, on, on the side with Commissioners and I have fought against them all over the state. Uh, I know business inside and out. Uh, I, I have dealt with more budgets, uh, uh, than, than I can possibly think of right now. I'm good at it, and quite frankly, we need it. And, 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 and I will tell you that, uh, despite the disparity, uh, sorry Gerald, in age, uh, I think I've got more experience, uh, when it comes to business as a whole. There, it's not just one type of business. I, I haven't focused on one budget. I have focused on many plumbers, contracting companies. I've dealt with every type of budget I can possibly think of, uh, and, and it's time to give it back. It's what I'm built for, it's what I do. It's what I do with the radio stations now, it's how you make it successful. It's taking a single idea, okay, like a courthouse, and finding out a way to maximize it across the board. And that's, that's what it takes to do it, and, and I'm prepared to give back to the community in that way.
Commissioner, why do you wanna keep going to the county or-
Well, you know, unfortunately, and, and, and let me say this, I, I appreciate, uh, where Jason's coming from because I think that, I think that he is honest, um, about his reason for, for running. And the one thing that we need, we need one of the two of us to represent Western or Southwestern Travis County. Because we don't have many opportunities to have conservative voices in Travis County. There are fifty-three elected office holders that are elected solely out of Travis County. Fifty-one are Democrats. Paul Workman and Gerald Darty are the only two Republicans that are elected out of Travis County. I think that I've been-
Zimmerman?
I mean, Zimmerman, well, you run nonpartisan.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, you know, now if, if John, if, if Don could put a label on him, you know, in the City Council, I mean, we, we'd know who he'd be. But, I mean, as partisan races-
He doesn't have a problem with getting labels.
And, uh, listen, I think that both of us can do the job. Um, I think you've got one person here that's proven that I can do the job. Can I do it better than Jason? I'm not saying that I can do it better than Jason. I'm just saying that you got a choice here. And as I've often said, the reason that you have races is if somebody is unhappy with somebody, if somebody honestly thinks that I haven't worked hard, honestly, continue to do that, continue to stand in, in, um, in, in spite of some of the things that, you know, we know as conservatives that we have to in this community, uh, then fine, there's a choice. I don't think there is a compelling reason to throw Gerald Darty out of office. And I think that that is the thing that is probably the most important in, in this community. I do know how to do the job. I have the connections to do it because you have it for ten years. If Jason were there for ten years, he'd have the connections that I have. And you need connections to do the job properly.
We have one question, another question from the audience?
Yeah, my question for Commissioner Darty-
I need you to.
Give us your name, son.
I'm Adam Khan, I do a blog in town and, yeah. Uh, my question for the Commissioner is, in two thousand twelve, when you were running for the office most recently, you made a, a big plank of your campaign platform that you were running on was completing State Highway Forty-five in Southwestern Travis County. I was down there a couple of weeks ago, and it doesn't look like a lot has happened on that project in the last three and a half years. Um, why would anything be different over the next four years if you are reelected? And for Mr. Nasur, what would you do differently to get S H forty-five constructed and completed?
Who wants to, who you want to answer that first?
Uh, you spoke up first.
Um, Forty-five Southwest was voted on in nineteen ninety-seven by the people of this community to build that road. That's eighteen, almost nineteen years ago. It has taken every bit of tenacity to get this road built, even when people said, let's build the road. We are most likely gonna get to do a ribbon cutting on Forty-five Southwest probably by the first of June. With any luck at all, maybe late spring. Um, it has been a task that I never thought that it would take the time that it has. And you're right, that was my biggest platform, it was probably the reason that I won that race in two thousand and twelve because my opponent at the time chose water and I chose transportation. And I said Forty-five Southwest will be the thing that I will get done. I will get it done, and I think we're gonna do the ribbon cutting, you know, either late spring or early summer. And that will be a joyous day because there are people that stand in line in this community to stop that road from being built. But we're gonna get it built.
Jason?
I don't think there's anything more to do on Forty-five. Uh, I think, uh, you know, it would be, it would be foolish of me, even in the most contentious of races, to take anything away from Gerald and the efforts that he had in doing Forty-five. Uh, he's right, it was, it was done back in nineteen ninety-seven. What's sad is a lawsuit didn't come to force the Commissioners at some point to get after it sooner. Uh, but quite frankly, the, the, the extension of, of Forty-five that's been contemplated and that'll get started here pretty soon isn't enough. Uh, if you ask me, Forty-five needs to extend all the way to Thirty-five. It needs to come all the way up around towards Six Twenty and connect into MOPAC Three Sixty, uh, tie into Thirty-five. Our problem isn't with just the traffic we have in Travis County. You've got expected growth of four-hundred-and-fifty percent in Hayes County between now and twenty fifty and five-hundred percent increase in population in Williamson County up until twenty fifty. Those people are coming to town. They're coming into Austin to work. And we have to continue to fight to do more so that we can get people in and out of the five-county metro while still providing for the inter-transportation of the people in the county. But Forty-five, uh, as, as it was contemplated and fought for by Gerald, i- is done. Uh, and, 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 and we're all thankful for that component. It needs to be built, but now we need to look ahead, or we're never gonna catch up.
Okay, well, good, good question.
Good question.
Uh, because I do, I, I think I remember a constituent out in Southwest. My mom lives in, in y'all's precinct out there by, uh, Menchaca and, uh, William Cannon in that area.
Glad to have her.
But I remember a lady saying, you know what? Because of the whole tenure, my baby was born when it was elected, and now she's graduating from high school and going to college, and the road has not yet been built. But, uh, now it is moving, uh, and like you mentioned, uh, Jason, it is, uh, you know, all the work and the hard, uh, and all the battles, you know, at Camp, was it Campco or Capo?
Campo.
Campo. But, uh, but anyway, I do have one question regarding, uh, and I went through it this year, that's why I wanna ask it. The funding to nonprofits. For some reason, it seems like certain nonprofits already have a certain amount designated, whether they need it or not. And my question to both of y'all is, how will you treat funding for nonprofits? Uh, and would you entertain, I'm gonna use George P. Bush's, uh, budgeting, would you entertain a zero bus, a zero-budget presentation from those nonprofits?
Well, effectively, let me go. Effectively, you have a best management practices, uh, situation that our executive manager over Health and Human Services, that's been Sherri Fleming. She, uh, has had an E-DIC, you know, from the Commissioners Court, uh, that that's exactly what she has to do. You know, we will spend, uh, somewhere around thirty million dollars this year for, uh, for the nonprofits. The unfortunate thing is, is the line continues to get longer. I mean, you know, you, you know, it's kinda like digging that hole in the, in the beach and you're, you know, get a handful and you stack it up, and this stack gets big. Well, every time you get your hand in it, you know, the sand rushes back in and you never have a hole in the ground. And that is one of the things that, I mean, as a community, I mean, and the affordability factor has created a situation, y'all, that's, uh, that's next to impossible to deal with. So best management practices, and it effectively starts with zero-based budgeting. You know, before you can even, uh, apply for money with, with the county, you have to hit certain benchmarks with our Health and Human Services. Um, and, and we're still gonna be telling new people no, and we're gonna be limiting some of the funding, you know, that, that we have traditionally given. Travis County is, is pretty generous with Health and Human Services. It's just that there are so many people that need so much. Um, and that's a, and that's a, that's a tough call. That's a, that's a tough call for a conservative. I mean, because you know that a lot of ass that are coming our way are people that really, truly need it. It's the difference between them feeding their child or turning on their electricity or having none of those.
Jason?
You know- You know, uh, it'd be one of the last things that I look at, be perfectly honest with you. Uh, it's, it's one thing, uh, to get involved in your official capacity, to go and help raise private funds to facilitate things that are needed. But we have, we have Sheriff's deputies that had their pop scale frozen, they're not getting the raises they're supposed to get. Uh, they're struggling to be able to stay in our county to work. Uh, and yet we mandate certain things from each, you know, from the Sheriff's Department. Uh, we, we've got three hundred and fifty-something low-water bridges that need to be built. Uh, it's hard to sit there and, and say, we're going to fund thirty million dollars plus to nonprofits when we have certain requirements and certain obligations as a county to ensure that we get the basic bare minimum things that we're entitled to. Uh, you know, had, had we not funded thirty million to nonprofits, maybe we would have fixed the bridge, and this is no jab, uh, to anyone in particular, but just as a practical matter, maybe we would have fixed the bridge that saved Deputy Hollis's life. You know? And it's a hard thing to sit there and say, no, I understand and I agree with that. But sometimes it's just flat hard. And, and you've got to look at that budget and decide, what is your core responsibility? What are your responsibilities? And, and, and when it comes down to it, there are a lot of other things that are far more important that we have underfunded and underutilized that need to be taken care of first. So I would take it to zero and not look at it until I had taken care of all the other things that I had to take care of first.
I need your best two-minute response to, um, just, I've noticed in my, in work I'm doing for the party, it's best that I take an approach, a multi-county approach to what I'm trying to do in terms of trying to increase African-American participation in Republican Affairs. I have to look at like a five-county area and I'm thinking, do you envision at some point that there may be some inter-county, uh, agreements to do, 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 try to do things in a collaborative kind of way?
I don't know that I understand your question.
In my outreach efforts, I, I've worked with people in Williamson, Travis, Hayes, Bastrop, and Caldwell.
Mm-hmm.
Do you envision that at some point, I know how Commissioners Court can be very territorial, but do you ever envision that there might become, may come a day when there's some inter-county, inter-regional way of trying to do business? Because it seems like the area's growing as a whole. Although Travis is center, but there's growth going on all around it. Will there, will there be kind of like a regional approach?
You know, at some point, I think that, I mean, it's inevitable to have things like that happen. But, but realistically, we're having a hard enough time just getting into an agreement or a series of agreements with the city. Uh, at some point, before you get to that five-county metro, you've got to look at a metro form of government. You've got to look at, uh, uh, not duplicating resources in the form of APD and Travis County Sheriff. Uh, you know, not paying fourteen million into the EMS system into the city, but having it integrated throughout the entire county. I don't know that we can look to the five-county metro, uh, in the form of those type of agreements until we get ourselves in a position where we are as efficient as we can possibly be with the city and the county collectively. Uh, do I think it's a good decision? When it comes to infrastructure, yes. But right now, that five-county metro isn't going to pitch in to build that infrastructure to get them in and out of Austin. They're looking to us specifically to be able to do it. Is it a good idea? Sure, I think it'd be a great idea. I just don't see it anytime soon.
Then I have one final question.
You want me to answer that?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, Mike, um, we, we effectively have that with CapCOG. Um, uh, no, CapCOG is a six-county because you throw Burnet, Burnet County into that. Here's the basic problem that you have with the counties that surround Travis County. Travis County is a blueberry in a strawberry patch. Whenever I go to work with Hayes County, with Williamson County, with Burnet County, with Bastrop County, and Caldwell County, I can work like that with them. I've got coo, I've got colleagues that fight me that are my colleagues. I mean, because you've got such a situation, let's face it, the City Council pretty much rules Travis County. I mean, you know, the city is the largest part of Travis County. And so just in transportation alone, I mean, if you talk with the centrist, you know, mindset from the city of Austin, they're more concerned about a bike lane, about a sidewalk, about walking than they are about doing the things that we all know that we need to do. I've got to go outside of my area, on my court, you know, you know, I have a fight most of the time. CapCOG is our, is, is our organization that we do what you're asking. And we do it pretty effectively. It's just hard to do it effectively when the center of that six-county is Austin and they are so different from the rest of the people that we deal with.
Now, uh-
You can do that in like three minutes, man.
We've got about three minutes and I, and I had, I had one, one last question.
Okay.
Um, I guess it is, what would make you a better Commissioner than your opponent?
Simply put-
In thirty seconds.
Sure. I've got energy, I've got drive, and I am passionate. Uh, I know government inside and out, particularly our government, our local government here. I have been in the trenches, dealing with every facet of what that budget entails. And, and, and I have convictions that will not be swayed. I will not give up my morals or my ethics or my principles. Uh, I am exceptionally conservative. For God's sakes, I think the greatest gift I got was the Statesman, you know, calling me the conservative in this race. I don't, you don't get a compliment very often from them in a Republican battle. But, uh, uh, I have what it takes. And I have the ability, I have the energy, and I'm ready and prepared to do it.
All right. Commissioner, you've got one minute.
Well, I mean, I'll go back to saying that you don't get elected three times as a Republican in Travis County for nothing. I've had opponents each time that I've run. Um, people know who I am. They know that I'm as hardworking a person as there is on the Commissioners Court. They know that I'm a dealmaker. Yeah, I'm a dealmaker. And I tell you what people want. People want people to govern and they want people to make decisions that benefit the majority of the people. All of us, Jason and I both, are going to have things that we hold near and dear to our heart and that philosophically, we are on the same page. Um, people don't have to question, you know, what they get with Gerald Darty. I mean, they just don't. They've never had to. I mean, it'll be interesting, Jason, I mean, because I know that this week we're in the editorial interviews and I, I read that thing too, so we'll, we'll find out, you know, who the, who the Statesman thinks, you know, can, uh, can, can do the job.
Thank you for both of y'all showing up. And like I said, you know, commend both of you for throwing your hats into the public arena. It's a challenge, it's a, a great task and a real beautiful experience at that, coming from my end.
I wish each of you good luck.
Thank you, thank you for having us. All right.
Thank you, Josh.
Hey, hello.